Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to this 2019 Caribou City Council Candidate Forum. I'm Jason Parent, and on behalf of the City of Caribou, I'd like to welcome you as this evening's moderator for this important forum as we head toward Election Day on November 5th. Before we begin the Candidates' Forum this evening, I have a couple of announcements that I'd like to make as it pertains to the upcoming election and the opportunity for all citizens to engage in the upcoming election, who are voters within the City of Caribou. So first and foremost, this announcement, anyone who needs to request an absentee ballot for the November 5th, 2019 election must do so no later than Tuesday, Thursday, I should say, October 31st, 2019, by 7:00 p.m. Absentee ballots can be issued after this date only due to extenuating circumstances, such as if someone were to be an inpatient at a hospital. So if you would like to cast your vote by absentee ballot for this upcoming election, you must contact the City Clerk's Office no later than the 31st of October, 2019. Ballots can be mailed, they can be picked up by an immediate family member, or voting can happen here in person at the City Hall. Voter registration, in terms of voter registration, in addition to the regular office hours of 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. here at the Caribou City Office, Monday to Friday, the Office of the Voter, the Registrar of Voters will be open from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, October 31st, in the Municipal Building at 25 High Street here in Caribou, for the purpose of registering voters and updating the voter list of both Caribou and Connor. For more information on either of these, or anything to do with the election here in Caribou, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 493-3324, extension 221. So again, welcome, everyone, to this evening's Candidate Forum. I'm going to read a brief excerpt from the City Charter, the Charter of the City of Caribou, which sort of details how elections are held as it relates to Caribou City Council, just to put it all into perspective for folks this evening. By charter, the Caribou City Council is elected by qualified voters of the City of Caribou at large for a three, a term of three years each. Only qualified voters of the city shall be eligible to hold the Office of Councilperson. The regular election of municipal officials is held on the first Tuesday of November after the first Monday in each year. Again, City Councilors shall be elected for three-year terms. The terms of municipal officials shall begin the first Monday of January. All powers of the city are vested in the council, except as otherwise provided by law or the city's charter. So now on to our Candidate Forum for this evening. Each candidate present here will be allowed to read a prepared opening statement, introduce themselves to those here in attendance, those watching electronically, and to sort of provide us with information about them and why they're seeking this office. They will have, in order to do that, they will have two minutes to deliver those opening remarks, if you will. The official timer, Christina Kane Gibson, to my left, will hold up a yellow card when 30 seconds remains in that time to help you with your time queues, and a red card when time is up. So please finish your opening statements, and those time queues will also be in effect when we enter into the question and answer round. You'll have two minutes with those same queues. Candidates are seated this evening in alphabetical order. We will begin opening statements with Mr. Roger Felix and conclude with Mrs. Joan Terrio, and we will follow opening statements with the question process, again proceeding in alphabetical order. This time, Mr. Haney will respond first to the question number one, followed by Councilmember Martin, and so on, ending with Mr. Felix. Councilmember Martin will be the first to respond to question number two, followed by Mr. Morrell, and so on. So we're going to continue to rotate, so everyone has the opportunity to answer a question first and be in that order. If time allows, we do hope to take questions from the audience. We have already received some, but if audience members do have questions, please write it on one of the yellow cards that have been provided. We're also accepting questions online, as I understand. And if you would like to do so, please make sure that your questions are intended for all candidates, not specifically one candidate. So with that, we will begin the opening round, not of questioning, but of the opening statements, and we'll do so with Mr. Roger Felix.
Well, thank you, Jason, and thank you to the citizens of Caribou for the exceptional opportunity, first of all, to even be a candidate for, to sit in the City Council. When I was growing up in northern Maine, in the Stockholm area, I never thought I'd ever be sitting in a position, or even trying to become in a leadership position of any type. I quickly found myself doing that while I was in the Army. A lot of young people in our community end up leaving to go on and try to become a leader and a manager outside of Caribou. I did that, I rose to all the ranks that I could within the Army. I've been in charge in both garrison and combat roles. And then I came back to my hometown because of what I thought was the most important thing to me and my family was the values and community that Caribou had, and still has, the capability of having. You know, Caribou has been long known for some of the best schools in the state, if not the country. And I wanted my family to live in that community and grow and raise their family, and also own homes and so forth. So I think I accomplished that. Then I went on to also go on and work with youth, because I believe the youth is where everything starts. You know, I ride around and I wonder where our teenagers are, because I don't see them outside of the high school. Where are they going? Why are they leaving our community? For every time they leave, we lose another potential leader within our community. So my vision for Caribou is to work with people, not in outside this room, to lead from the outside, not just on the inside. So I thank you for that.
Great, Mr. Haney, your two-minute opening statement.
Good evening, Jason, Christine, and members of the audience. My name is Milo Haney. I have lived here in Caribou all my life with my wife, Priscilla, and children, and have owned my own business with my family for 43 years. I have been involved in many organizations and clubs, and over the years, trying to stay involved with how the community could and should be better for the people in this community. I have seen good times and I've seen bad times. But lately, it seems for a lot of people, we are seeing more bad times. For many years, people have asked me to run for City Council, but I felt I just didn't have the time. Now I feel, with the support of my wife and my family, I will have the time. And my goal is to work with the people, try to resolve a lot of issues that have been going on that's not going in the right direction, and hope that we can solve them and get on the right track so people can live and afford to stay here. Right now, we seem to see a migration going out, not coming in. My goal is to try to help steer that in the other direction. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Councilor Martin, your two minutes.
Good evening. I've lived in Caribou since 1970. I've raised my family here. I have grandchildren here. My career in education, 43 years in accounting, has been in Caribou. So I have, and I've had a good life here, and I just like giving back a little bit. I enjoy promoting the city. I like to look at things in a positive light, and hopefully I can continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Martin. Mr. Morrell, your opening statement.
My name is Doug Morell. I'm the fourth generation of the family to be born and raised and live in Caribou. And it's my goal to work with the people. In my opinion, we've got to change direction. What has gone on in the past doesn't necessarily work, and we're seeing it. I think we need to change our direction. I have my wife, Jenna, three kids, and five grandchildren. And you know, I'd like to be able to be along with my other three generations. You know, when my time comes to pass, I'd like to think I can be buried here and a new generation of my family continue on. I think it involves change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morell. We now move on to Councilor Terrio.
Good evening, thank you for being here. My name is Joan Terrio, and I'm running for reelection to the Caribou City Council. I've served on the council for the past seven years. We're a full-service community with the amenities that go with it. A wonderful hospital, great police station, fire and ambulance, the library, the Islander, the rec center, I could go on and on and on. And the new school that's going up, there's positive things that are happening in Caribou. I remember when the schools, when we got the project for the school, somebody made a comment that it was like winning the lottery, and I think it was. And I think that's gonna, has generated a lot of energy into the, into the city, and we've all, we've even got a dog park now, so that's kind of different, too. We have a new senior living center that the investors, I want to thank them for what they've done there. Unfortunately, one of the darkest and saddest times I can ever remember was the secession movement that took place a few years ago in Caribou. That about broke my heart and the hearts of many people who live here. And that dark cloud lifted, and we came through intact, and we've moved on. And I know, living in a full-service community costs money, and nobody wants to waste your tax dollars. I can only tell you that I'm determined to do the best I can for Caribou. It's not always an easy job, because sometimes you have to make hard decisions that you wish you'd never had to make. But I love living here, and I love living, serving on the council, and I hope to continue to do so.
Thank you, Councilor Terrio. We will now begin our question round, and I'll move on ahead. It's that Christina Kane Gibson, our timer, will be putting up the 30-second signal when the 30 seconds remain. And then, when and if she puts up the red sheet that indicates that your time is up, and I will be asking you to move on so that we can get on to the next candidate. So our first question goes to Mr. Haney, and it is, what do you see as the greatest concern for the community of Caribou, and what do you see as the greatest need? Your two minutes.
Well, the greatest concern for Caribou, in my opinion, is declining population. We educate our children, they go to college, and after college, they go to work in places other than Caribou, because Caribou has nothing here to offer. Caribou's greatest need is to make it affordable to live here. As long as we keep raising taxes every year like we have for the last 10 years or more, no business is going to want to be here or come here, or even be able to afford to live here. Another great need, greatest need, I feel we should have, is for people to be more honest to the public. When I say this, it goes back to the school. I went to the school meeting at CPAC, and I had asked several questions. One of the questions I asked is to Mr. Dope, how much more money do you anticipate is going to cost the taxpayers before the school is built? I was told, and the audience was told also, not one cent. And here we are, folks. School's not even half-built. On the ballot this year, we're looking at $175,000 that the school's looking for. I'm not against education. We need education. But I'm against what everybody keeps telling us, and it doesn't come true. I'd like to see the community and the people working in the community be more honest to people when these questions come up. Seems like they sugarcoat it to try to get it in, get it started, and then we're forced to pay the bills afterwards, which people can't. Can't do that. They're having hard times.
I'm going to have to call it that, because that's the two minutes on that, so maybe we can pick up on some of that in another question with you. But we'll move that question now to Councilmember Martin.
Yeah, I agree with Milo on this, that our population, we need to increase our population. And to do so, we just try to make this town a really inviting place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on now to Mr. Morell.
I agree with both. It's the exodus of people from our community. And the greatest need that we face is how do we prevent this? A lot of ideas have been thrown out over the years, and I've been around and heard many of them, and they just fail to work. I'm a believer that it is the financial foundation that's preventing this. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Terrio.
Well, I guess we're all in agreement, because that was my greatest concern, is how we can keep the young people from leaving after they finish school, and how do we keep our seniors from retiring elsewhere, or how do we get them to come back after they have moved and retired to come back and live here? And the need is how to provide the types of jobs and social amenities that would make the young people want to stay. We can't, we can't change our climate, we can't change our location. But if we could come up with something, how to, something that the young people like and would stay here for, and the same for the seniors, how we can provide these facilities and the services needed to follow with them as they age in the area.
Thank you, Councilor Terrio. And the last word on this question goes to Mr. Felix.
Well, I agree with him on the exodus piece, but I think everybody, you know, we're missing the big picture on the why and the how, and you know, we're stuck in this mode of "we've tried that before" mentality, and we're just going to stay sitting in there, right? All I hear is a lot of gloom and doom, and that we don't have any money, the city paid for this, they can't pay for that, X, Y, and Z, but we never focus on the positive things, okay? Such as, we got the best schools in the state, okay? We got a top-ranking, award-winning hospital. We have the first-ever VA clinic in the nation, okay? We have a top-notch veterans home. We have all these things going for us, and it all comes down to scare, right? Now, we need to look at, how could we invest, like somebody, you know, we're not the only people worried about exodus. There's a lot of businesses out there trying to find new people to work, but they've come up with ideas. They've invested in that young person. They said, hey, why don't we send you to college, right? So you can replace the police officer when they're getting ready to retire. So we're not scrambling, trying to find a new person to fill in. Why don't we hire our own and keep moving forward? And focus on positive things, and let's get Caribou on the map to where they're not thinking that it's just a place on the Weather Channel, okay? We've got to get out of that mode, okay? There's a reason that people moved back here. It has to do with values and community, and take advantage of those things. You know, we have some of the biggest veteran organizations in the state, right here in our community, and they do a lot of great things along with all the other organizations. So let's keep it positive, moving forward. We know that it's a money thing. Everything costs money, everything goes up, okay? But let's look at it in ways that we can compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Our second question is, what are the key economic issues that need to be resolved today? And how do you plan to support efforts to bring new businesses to Caribou? And it goes first to Councilor Martin.
Well, I think that, first off, we need to keep the businesses that we have, and we need to engage with them and ask them what they need and what they want. We've started this year that the manager goes around and visits businesses, and if any business wants to invite the manager over, feel free to do so. We need to increase the tax base, but again, that goes to population. And to support new businesses in Caribou, I think we need to promote our quality of life, advertise the things that we have. This place is not for everybody, but it's for a lot of people. And support maybe improved internet. We have a good TIF program to help businesses get started. Just a general open door. You come into City Hall, and the first question should be, how can we help you? Thank you.
Mr. Morell, your thoughts on economic development and business issues?
For clarity, I'm a 29-year business owner. Just made it through, as Milo says, seen good times and seen a fair amount of bad times. So I think I have firsthand knowledge of business and what it's going to take to keep them here. In my opinion, the cost of being in Caribou is, to me, the issue. One of the biggest issues. And I'm not saying it's any different from any other community. I'm saying Caribou's cost to do business and live, and it's all about growing the base. I will be supporting efforts to make Caribou more financially attractive for the residential and business, businesses. In my opinion, we have to fix Caribou's financial foundation, to make it where people look at Caribou as a place where you can get more bang for the buck. I agree with statements that we have hospitals and all the kumbaya. I believe 100% in them, but it's not enough. It's not enough, because if it was, we would be seeing growth and we're not receiving decline. I think instead of going the old route, we need to change it up and change our direction. And we need to do it, starting with the financial foundation. The old adage, you build a home on a crooked foundation, you're putting on a crooked ridge cap. That's kind of my philosophy when we approach on this deal with Caribou. It's not going to be the fix-all, catch-all, but I believe it to be the first step, solid step in writing Caribou. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrell. Councilor Terrio.
Well, I don't think that any economic issue can be resolved right away today, but I think over time, again, growing the community population, along with the infrastructure, doing what we can to make Caribou more attractive. And one of the things that we're doing right now is there's a lot of light cleanup going on, and that definitely makes our community more attractive to people who might be looking to come to the area. Anybody that maybe wants to build a house or put up a building for a business, if we can keep the permitting, the permitting cost low, and also make it a little easier, maybe, for some of the rules that are out there to do business, offer incentives to people who want to perhaps buy some city-owned property that we have, property for rehab or development. We could offer them some incentives there. And the businesses, we can offer incentives and perhaps assistance with funding through the Economic Development Program, things like that.
Councilor Terrio, your two minutes on this, Mr. Felix.
I think it kind of also goes back to the old business versus new business philosophy. I remember when I first retired from the Army, coming back to Caribou and working on starting up a business. And it was really funny that the people that were sitting on the economic engine, so to speak, which I really didn't consider an engine, because they wanted me to sell my firstborn in order to get help to start a business. But most of those people were the same businesses that were going to be my competition. And they were reluctant to have new things come in, okay? I recently heard a story, just recently, of people going to one of our economic development organizations that we pay money to, which is NMDC, and the people there told them to go to Prescott. Okay? I mean, those are the economic things that we've got to look at. You know, is it old school versus new? You know, if, if somebody was trying to bring a new business in here, but it competed with the people of Name Factor in Caribou, are they going to be able to get through? What is Caribou going to do to help them? As, as the other councilors said, what are we going to do to make it incentivized? We got buildings that are empty. You know, a lot of times when I sit and hear these meetings, I hear about the cart before even the horse. Everybody's looking at, how much money are we going to get for a square foot for that? And how much income we're going to get, and how much this, and how much that? How about we get them here? And then worry about the profit margins, after the same thing. Because I'm sitting there at the Lowering Development Authority, seeing the same exact thing. Everybody's sitting there worrying about how much money they're going to get for a business coming in, and they don't look at getting them here in the first place. Because if you get them here, it'll open doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Mr. Haney, your thoughts on economic incentives and bringing new business to Caribou?
Many times I've come in this, into the council chamber here, and the topic, several different times, has been high-speed internet, trying to get it to all the residents instead of just a few. I believe that we should be looking at that, getting everybody with the high-speed internet so that they can choose to have their own business if they want, and help them. So to me, that is one of the reasons we don't have businesses in Caribou. Another thing to give businesses, in my opinion, is to lower taxes, obviously, or give more TIFs. I've seen that many times in here, where people have come in here wanting to do a business, build a business, this and that, and were choosing to go to Connor or other towns because it was just going to be too high a taxes here. And TIF programs were offered, and they did stay here. So I believe TIFs do work, so that needs to be offered more to a lot more businesses to get started. Also, to get new businesses and keep the businesses we already have, we need to stop the migrating of people, leaving. We have 29 houses, 129 houses on the market in the realtors' hands today. That's not counting houses for sale by owners. This calls for the councilors and the department heads to get together and work out a plan to downsize our government, to make it affordable for businesses to be here, and most of all, to live here. This has to be done and should be done. It should not be put on the back burner and do it another day. It has to be done now. So my opinion is, we need to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haney. Our next question has to do with taxes, as do a number of the questions that have been submitted by audience members and others online. This specific one, which Mr. Morrell will answer first, asks, candidates usually say they want to lower taxes, but how would you plan to do that without cutting services? Doug Morell, that's for you.
Thank you. In my opinion, we first need to evaluate the level of services that we're offering. In my opinion, it's been taken for granted that these high levels are justifiable. Maybe they are, maybe they're not, but nobody's taken the time to do a study on them. And I would further that by, people in the audience or watching elsewhere, if you have a camp up on one of the lakes, do you feel comfortable at your camp when you're there for the weekend? Most people that I know do, and in fact, there are volunteer fire stations, their police is brought in by either sheriffs or state police. I'm not saying that's the right way, but it deems the attention of a legislative body to due diligence and dig through it. If the study supports cutting, in my opinion, if a, if a study supports cutting some services, reducing or realigning them, then so be it. As a community, we have to live within our means. I believe we need to change the way we deliver our services to a more fiscally responsible means. There's 100 ways to tip over the outhouse. It depends who's doing the pushing. There's better ways that, I can guarantee it, but we need to look at to see if there's better ways to deliver those services equal to or better for a cheaper, more sustainable cost than what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Councilor Terrio, your thoughts on lowering taxes and cutting services?
I don't think that we can lower taxes without cutting services. It's as simple as that. So I guess we've got to decide as a community what we want for our services. When we first started Thursdays on Sweden, for instance, a friend of mine and I sat there, and we sold our cookies for the local charities and things. And we had chairs on each side of us. And people would come and talk. They would tell us, me especially, because I was the counselor on there, what, what they felt about the area, about the taxes, about things like that. And their biggest thing was, that I heard anyway, was told to me was, they did not want to lose their ambulance service. They did not want to lose their fire department or their police station. They wanted those amenities, they wanted those services. So in order to keep what we have, I think we need to look in a different direction, perhaps putting some energies into raising revenues instead of cutting services and different things like that. I've got a couple of ideas that I've been pushing with the city manager that maybe we can do to change, not necessarily cut services, but change some of the equipment we have, things like that, that maybe would still work, but cost a little bit less, so.
Thank you, Councilor Terrio. Mr. Felix, your two minutes on this question.
Yes, I agree. I don't, I don't believe that anybody's going to sit here and stroke a pen or wave a magic wand and say that they're going to cut taxes. It isn't going to happen. Right now, you know, they've been, with the cost of things moving up and so forth, and people want services, obviously they want services. You know, I don't, and I think we've got to step back, too, and think about the people that are providing our service. What are they dealing with now that they didn't deal with 10 years ago? Okay? Okay? Right now, our city has a major drug problem, and nobody sits up here and talks about it, okay? When you see a 20-year-old walking through town with a backpack on, right, it should draw attention to you. But I've never heard anybody in Caribou say that, you know, admit that we have a problem. There's other towns that have, and they're taking, and they're taking strides to fix it. In addition to that, you know, for the tax bases, you know, if somebody said, hey, we're going to raise your mill rate, 1, 1 mil, the doom and gloom society would be like, holy crap, the world's going to end, right? 1 mil on $100,000 is 27 cents a day, okay? Is your ambulance, fire department, police department worth 27 cents a day? That's what you really got to ask yourself, okay? Are you having the best schools and all these other things or, and so forth? Is it worth the price? Okay? Obviously, yes, you can go down through these, this whole budget and look at it and, and cut, and cut some corners, okay? But we got to start somewhere, but we don't want to take things away in order to make it viable. I don't think if you lowered the mill rate 4%, it's going to make a whole lot of people move to Caribou. I think if you make Caribou more attractive, more people will move to Caribou. Thank you.
Well, I would start by downsizing the departments to go on. And I don't mean having people lose their jobs. What it means, when someone leaves or retires from the department, don't replace that person. No one gets hurt that way. We also, also I think we should look into all, all these departments, one by one. And I would start with the fire department. Every town around us, except for Prescott, has a volunteer fire department. Every town around us seems to go by just fine with their, with the, with the, with the volunteers. Second, I would look at the police department. We have outside resources, such as Sheriff's Department, which we pay a county tax for to have. I would look at that with the understanding that we have, if any questions should happen, we have the state police, we have the game warrants, we have border patrols, that all went into being to help them. So I would say that we could downsize the department to a normal, to a better cost for the community. I would look at the highway department. We, in the past, have talked about contracting snow removal. We have big snowstorms. The haul drivers are out 25, 30 hours straight. After the storm is over, we're back, we're back in the, we're back hauled snow and stuff. We're paying all the overtime. So I believe that we can do that. Also, with the rec department, I believe we could contract parks, things like that. So that, keep the cost down. These are the things that I think we should look at, and hopefully, we could downsize our, our government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. The last word on this question will go to Counselor Martin.
Yeah, I think the only way you can do that is probably consolidation. Consolidation within the city, consolidation with the schools and so forth. It's been mentioned over the years that, to look into the water district and see if that could be merged with the city. We pay the utilities district $330,000 a year for hydrant rental. And then Public Works has to make sure the hydrants are free of snow. I mean, that's like going to rent a car in February and having to shovel it out of the snowbank. I mean, it's, it's just not right. So consolidation would be a key and hopefully, for another example is, we're going to need a ladder truck in 2027 for the fire department. That's over a million dollars, $2 million. And I'm thinking, we should be talking with Prescott right now to see when their ladder truck is due. And you just take turns having the ladder truck. It's only 15 minutes away. So I, I think those are the things that you have to kind of look for. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Martin. We're going to move on now to the next question, our fourth question. And we're going to begin with Counselor Joe Terrio on this one. And the question is, what do you see as the Caribou community's greatest strength and why?
It's people. The people who keep us safe and well and plow our roads and fight our fires and render aid when we need it, and the people who build the dog parks and the, bring the activities like the marathon to our town, and the people who keep all the everyday operations running a city in order, who invest their resources here, who open restaurants and breweries, build the houses and the senior living centers and, and teach our kids every day, and the people who have had businesses here for years and years. They give their resources, monetary or their time, the volunteers who make the Thursdays on Sweden so much fun. The people who lend a hand in town when you, when you need one, or bake a casserole when you suffer a loss or celebrate with you when you, when the occasion arises. The people who don't look at you when you go through town or walking the streets and say hello, even though you don't know them, they don't look at you like you've got two heads. They'll, they'll actually answer you. And without these people who make up our community, we have no community.
Thank you very much, Counselor Terrio. We'll move on to Mr. Felix.
Yeah, I, I would agree. It's the community itself. It's the work ethic. It's the values that we've held for so many years. I myself could have retired anywhere in the world. When I, when I retired from the Army, I chose to come back here because of those values. I believe that every young person can learn so much living here and becoming part of a community like this. I see it every day with the youth that I helped develop that come from all over the United States right now. They, they come here and they are so surprised of the community and how everybody takes care of each other because they don't see it anywhere else. Now, that's what makes us, that's what separates us from everybody else, is who we are, our heart. We have a big heart. We're generous people, and I think we all love living here. We may have differences, but I think in all, when the rubber meets the road, we're all going to be one. So, thank you.
Mr. Haney, your thoughts on Caribou's greatest strength?
Well, I'd agree, people are our greatest strength, but I also believe snow. Snow brings in tourists, which helps businesses such as restaurants, hotels, gas stations, repair shops, and much more. Most of all, it's recreational. Over the past years, I've been against the ways the recreation department is going. And if elected to counsel, I would like to work with other counselors and the rec department to see if we can make it a better, a better for all the citizens and taxpayers, be more affordable for all. I think it's, it's well-needed. I think that's the key to having people come in the area and spend money and help support the businesses that are here now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Strengths.
Excuse me. Yeah, I, I think our greatest strength is the people, of course. It's our quality of life, and that's what we should be promoting. And it's just a friendly place, a nice place to live, so. A lot of, some people come back, and they come back because they want to raise their kids here. So it's not, it's not all a dead end. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. The last word on Caribou's strengths will go to Dr. Morrell.
I agree with everybody. It's the people. It's, it's always about the people. And I believe in my heart that this community and the people in it will understand, thoroughly understand, when the facts are, are shown and the numbers are open to them on the financial foundation of the community as to why we need to change it up a little bit. And I do in my heart believe, once they're shown, they will, they will approve of it, as they would in their own checkbooks at home, in their personal checkbooks. We have to live within our means. I'm not saying we get rid of things. I'm not trying to make bold statements at cutting anything. We got to fix the foundation first, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrell. We're going to begin our fifth question at the far end of the table again with Mr. Felix. And it talks about the vision for revitalizing downtown and asking you to tell us about your vision for doing so.
Revitalizing downtown, it seems like my, my vision for it would be to get some of those small mom-and-pop organizations back in the community. You know, the, the days of people traveling from one store to another kind of vanished a little bit. But we have a lot of open space down there, and it seems like the only time that there's anybody down there is when they're doing evenings on Sweden Street. And, you know, we just lost a major business down there. Now there's a huge building that makes three big buildings just sitting there empty. Maybe come up with an idea of, you know, right off the hip of having a contest for a business. How many of those buildings does the city own? You know, have a contest for a business to say, whoever comes up with the best idea, you know, we make an incentive. You go in there and we don't charge you a lease payment for a year or whatever. Whatever it takes to get people in the door, okay? And, you know, because if we said that out loud and you got 20 businesses, I guarantee you there'd be people sitting there going, how much money we're going to get from them in the first year? How much tax revenue is that? How many of this? How many of that, right? Instead of looking like, how many jobs are they going to make? What are they going to provide? Is it another organization? Is it another thing that we can add to our community? Okay, so we got to get people downtown in order to make it justified. Right now, the only time they're going there is to post office and to the movies, okay? And dropping things off at the cubby, okay? But we got to open it up and make new things down there. Give some advantages to people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Mr. Haney, your two minutes on downtown revitalization.
Over the last several decades, this question has been asked. Economic development is based on growing population, which we do not have. A business will not locate here if people are moving out. The old saying is, we cannot control the weather, but we can control the taxes. I made the chart that I read out to the council a few weeks back. Taxes for the last 10 years have gone up every year. The only, that only tells me that no one in the community that has the power to make changes to help keep people here aren't paying attention or don't care. For people to ask me what my vision is for downtown, I don't have a specific one, but I would like to have one. My opinion is, if we are going to get businesses to come to Caribou, we need to work with our departments to lower their budgets with the declining population. We have had, we have had to live within their means so we still have all the services we need and none that we don't. This is a hard subject for the council, but if changes are not made, the community will only continue to die. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Counselor Martin, your two minutes on this question.
Yes, I'm sure everybody would love to see downtown like it was on a rainy day during harvest 30 years ago, just walled all people. But we are trying. We have a good TIF program. Empty buildings that we own are offered for a dollar. So it's not because the building is expensive. We need maybe other incentives to draw them here. We, we do have a program for storefront refurbishment. And there's more than the, the theater and the, I mean, we have a new daycare center there that hundreds of people go to every day. And we have a couple stores down there, but hopefully, we can fill the rest of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Mr. Morrell.
So years back, I sat on the Downtown Revitalization Committee when we did the papers downtown, which was nice. It really spruced it up and some trees. It was nice visual appearance. It didn't fix the problem. It's nice to look at and it's nice to drive by. You're going to hear me use that financial foundation over and over, and this is another point. We have to fix the financial foundation in order to be, to begin forming a sustainable plan for the downtown. It comes down to population, population, population. Most of us know this. We have to buck up and, and sharpen up our pencils and make the cost of living in Caribou attractive, both business and residential. And I'll preface that by Mapleton. What a great little town. Beautiful town, great people. They, they just exploded. How did they do that? Beyond being great people and a nice place, the cost of living there was cheap. The cost to build, I could build a home there, or you could build a home there and get more in your home with less, less taxation on it. It was more bang for your buck. In my opinion, to try to give a plan, for me to give a plan, fixing Caribou's financial foundation is just, without fixing the foundation, is just pie in the sky. It's more white noise that we've heard over and over and over again. It doesn't work. Neither does the "build it and they will come" philosophy that has failed us so miserably in this town. I still believe, we fix the foundation, we got a straight ridge cap. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Morrell. Counselor Terrio, the last word on downtown revitalization is yours.
Okay. Pretty much everything's been said that I would have said. I, years ago, when I was growing up and we could park downtown and walk one side of the street, the other side of the street, we had all kinds of, of stores, places to stop in for ice cream or soda or lunch or whatever. And it's asking what our vision would be? That would be my vision, to do that again, right there. But I don't know that it's ever going to happen, at least maybe not in my lifetime, maybe sometime down the road. But that, that is the one thing I'd love to see in the meantime. If and when it ever happens, maybe it will never happen, but we can certainly work with what we have as far as making it attractive. Help with the facades on, on the buildings. Paint, more flowers perhaps, some trees, more trees, and benches, and anything to make the downtown more attractive. And I think it's attractive now, but to make it more attractive, to want to bring people in town to walk around and, and enjoy what's there now, and, and who knows? Something, somebody may come along at some point in time and say, I really like this, and maybe I'm going to put a business here. But, you know, just do what we can to, with, and work with what we have right now.
Thank you, Counselor Terrio. I'm going to encourage our candidates to try to answer the next question with one word, yes or no, so that we can make sure that we get to the questions of the individuals who have submitted them. And it is, quite frankly, yes or no question. And it's number six, and it says, "If elected, would you make it a priority to attend all council meetings?" And it begins with Mr. Haney.
Yes, absolutely. Well, of course.
I already do.
Yes.
All right. Thank you for making that efficient, folks. We'll move on to our seventh question then, which will begin with Councilmember Martin on this one. And it's, "Are you in favor of cutting the city's budget as the population is declining?" We've been discussing a lot of that tonight, and they, this questioner wants to know specifically what your thoughts are on cutting the budget as the population declines.
Well, every time I look at the budget and the budget process, I try to find the right balance of what people want and what people can afford. I am sure that at some point, if the population continues to decline, there'll be a tipping point where, yeah, we have to. But I don't think we're there yet. I, I think people want these services, so for now...
No.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Mr. Morrell.
Yes, due diligence supports it.
All right, thank you. We'll move, Ms. Terrio.
Even if the population declines in the town, the infrastructure's still there. The, the streets, the roads, the plowing, things like this. So that still has to be maintained. If it declines enough so that perhaps it would be more productive to see if there are other ways to consolidate with other communities, then maybe at that point in time. But right now, no.
Mr. Felix.
Absolutely not, due to the fact that if it meant cutting any services that we currently have, we're just going to lose out on, on advantages of people looking at us as an optimal place to come. In addition to that, I've never been able to put a price tag on any life that I've ever been around. So if we cut a service, then we might lose a life, and there ain't no price on life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Mr. Haney, the last word on this one's yours.
As I stated in question number five, we need, as counselors and department heads, to work together to bring down the budget. And I stated, it can be done. Each department is going to try to say they can't. But at the end of the day, if we have any hope of holding on to what we still have and grow, we have to do it. grow, we have to do it. There will be some pain in the beginning, but in, but I believe in time, departments will adjust and change. As you've seen, many of yous here in the audience and, and watching this tonight, the city has not been growing whatsoever and it needs to have changed for it to happen. So I believe without cutting services, we can do it.
All right. Well, our next question continues along that line of thought and it states that in a recent letter to the editor, uh, to the Arista Republican newspaper, signed by two candidates, two of you for city council, the idea of zero-based budgeting was cited as a possible solution to cut spending. Uh, this question wants you to please give a specific example of something that the city council could do during the annual budget process to balance the needs of the city departments with a desire to maintain or lower the annual tax rate. And the question first goes to Mr. Morell.
Part of that question gets answered from one through seven. Caribou uses incremental budgeting philosophy, which basically says last year's budget was the gospel. We look at the new year increases and add to last year's budget and deem that as a fit budget. And some will argue, we have department heads that know their departments, and they do, but we need to listen and take what they have for their budget as the gospel. I'm from a school of thought that I have two supervisors that have the authority to do bidding on my company's behalf. Not one bid leaves my office without me going over the numbers. It's part of my job. I pose and I, I support zero-based budgeting. Making the legislative body, the council, do its work for the people. And that's overseeing every line item. Zero-based budgeting is slowing the process down, taking every line item and looking at its function and its dollar value. And by doing that, by doing diligence, by, by going through each line item and its cost, you'll find lines that need to be decreased or you might find lines that are underfunded or not needed at all. As far as lowering the annual tax rate, this is only one tool in the chest, but coupled with the others, uh, dealing with, in my opinion, the overvaluation in Caribou with the properties, financial foundation and the delivery of services, we can make ourselves more attractive. Thank you.
Mr. Morell, Councilor Terrio.
Well, the suggestion of going line by line is something that we pretty much already do now. We take, we look at the, at the budgets, we talk with the department heads, we look at the lines. We look and see if there's any place that can be cut or whatever. And after we've gone through them, the manager looks at them and he'll come back with slashes here and slashes there and things like that. And we'll do whatever we can to lessen that budget, to take out what isn't needed, but you have to understand that there are times when we're, something's gonna happen. Right on the road, I live on, the river road, nobody expected that to collapse like it did, and it did. And you've got to, you've got to have some money for, for something like that, so. And if, if at the end of the year, no matter how you use your, do your budget, whether it's zero-based or anything else, at the end of the year, it's not a loo, use it or lose it scenario. If you don't use it, it's still in the budget and one way or another, uh, if there's a surplus, one way or another, then that gets either put back for a, a little bit for a rainy day fund and some of that will go back to the taxpayer in, um, by lowering the mill rate.
Councilor Terrio, Mr. Felix?
I, I would say if we could, if we could figure out a way to zero balance a budget, we could, uh, write that up and send that to the federal government and, uh, we would be very, very rich. Uh, I don't, I don't think there's a, there's gonna be, because there's so many what-ifs when there, people are developing a budget. I mean, I, I pulled that budget off the internet and there's so many lines on that, you know, they'd be in here for months just trying to figure out what money's going where and so forth. I mean, they have to, they have to trust the people that we have in place that are in charge of these organizations to give us realistic numbers. And then we also have to have something set aside for an emergency clause, as, uh, Councilor Jones said, uh, you know, because there's always those what-ifs. Um, but the lower, the lower the tax rates, you're not gonna do it initially. I think that's a time-based process that over time it will happen. If we can cut a little bit off here and there, yes. But just to say that we're gonna eliminate services in order to lower a budget, I mean, are you really, are you really balancing the budget or are you just cutting your services? That's all I can say about that. Thank you.
Mr. Felix, Mr. Haney.
Zero-based budgeting is based on accountability. When I was a part of a group called Citizens for Responsible City Management, we were looking at a budget in one department to see how money was being spent. One item in particular struck, struck out. For three years in a row, one line item had 12 batteries for an expense. That's 36 batteries in three years for that department. That caught our attention very quickly. So what zero-based budgeting does, it shows how our tax money is being spent and it holds the department in checks with their spending. As part of our group, we went out to collect signatures for zero-based budget. We collected hundreds of signatures to bring to the council. We had them enact this process only to get it turned down. They said through the city's lawyers, it had to go through a charter change. That was a two-year process, only to be defeated. In my opinion, anything that's good for the city never happens. This is why the city is in a crisis. Taxes going up every year, people leaving at enormous rates, houses empty everywhere, there's no accountability anywhere. This has to change and I am looking forward, as a counselor, to try to help that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Last word on this question goes to you, Councilor Martin.
Well, the, uh, the budget process is outlined in the city charter, uh, on how it's to be done. Uh, it includes input from the public and we would encourage more input from the public. And, uh, I agree with Mr. Felix on his thoughts. So, uh, thank you.
All right. We have received six submitted questions, which from my read of them fall into three similar buckets. Um, so I, I brought them together. I'm gonna read both of the questions, uh, in each set as we move through here and ask that you sort of incorporate your response for both. Um, and the first candidate to address these will be Councilor Terrio. Um, so the, uh, the first set of questions, the first one is, how do you explain the mill rate per household to those who don't understand what 1% different, difference means? And there's a similar question around mill rate related to the, like Caribou-Conner situation, where it notes that Caribou's a service center, which has been acknowledged by some of the candidates tonight. Uh, community and many residents feel that a portion of their property taxes subsidizes places like Connor Township who pay a tax rate of 7.46 mill rate compared to Caribou's 24.55. As a member of the Caribou City Council, what steps would you take to make certain that communities receiving services from Caribou are paying their fair share? So how would you explain the mill rate and what a 1% difference makes? And what steps would you do to make sure that Caribou, communities receiving services outside of Caribou are paying their fair share?
Wow. You're, you're asking the, like, the least math. Okay. Say you have a mill rate of .25. My husband will, will, yes or no? Point, .2500. Okay, that's $25 per thousand. Okay, so if you have a hundred thousand dollar house, you will pay $2,500. Right? Okay, right?
All right.
So if, if you're gonna, if it's gonna go up 1%, you're gonna pay 1% more, which is what? $25? $25? Okay, so it goes, uh, along like that is, that's how you would do it. And what was the...
What about, um, making sure that other municipalities who are receiving services from Caribou?
We're working on that. The council is working on that right now. We're taking a hard look at what the fees are that we charge for other municipalities, um, that we offer, uh, ambulance, you know, things like that. We're looking at that, yes, to make sure it comes.
Thank you, Councilor Terrio. You may actually get a buy on the first one unless you disagree with how the mill rate is calculated.
No, I, I totally agree. I, I think I would explain it to people and break it down to the, to that lower level and say, you know, like, for every mill, it's a hundred dollars on every, you know, a hundred thousand on your value of your home. Uh, and then for the Connor situation, I, I agree that, you know, maybe they have to look at making sure that they're getting, uh, accreditation and, and financial accreditation for services that are provided to that community and making sure that's coming in. Uh, but again, you know, uh, just because they have a, you know, going back to my original statement, just because their mill rate's low, uh, you know, I don't see a whole lot of businesses in Connor. So if they're, if the mill rate was the issue, why aren't there big businesses in Connor, Maine? So, thank you.
Mr. Felix, Mr. Haney.
Kinda confused about this question, but, uh...
Mill rate?
A mill rate? Right now for the city of Caribou is 24.55. So that would mean that's $24.55 on every thousand dollars a year homeless valued at. Having said that, uh, to me, oh boy, this is a tough one. I don't know. Uh, I lost my brain and saw that one.
Well, we can go on to the second part of that question, which is, uh, communities like Connor who pay lower mill rates and receive services from Caribou and how you equalize that.
Well, definitely I would like to be living in Connor, obviously, because Connor is a lot lower, the place to live. Uh, we do pay, uh, uh, a lot more than Connor, but we also do services for Connor, which a couple of those services, I believe they're getting a, a very cheap ride from us. And I would hope that Counselor, uh, Joan would be, uh, in, looking really hard at that. And one of them is the plowing that we do. I've been not in favor of that for, whatever, but, uh, I, that's a hard question. I don't know who gave it to you, but I wasn't prepared to be able to answer mill rate over percentages and things like that. I just don't have it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Haney. Uh, Councilor Martin, your thoughts on explaining mill rate and, um, Caribou-Conner and other communities who are getting services from Caribou?
I think the mill rate was explained. Uh, just to add, that one mill in Caribou raises about $380,000. So you can think in those terms if you're, if you're looking at an increase in the mill rate. In terms of, uh, services, that's been a bugaboo of mine for a long time. I started four or five years ago, I started with a library. We were charging each local town $400 a year for all their citizens to use the library. Well, that's been changed now, that we don't charge the town, we charge the patriots. So if you're, if you wanna be a member of the Caribou Library and you live in New Sweden, you have to pay a fee. And it, they're doing that at the rec. I'm sure that these fees can be looked at and we, as Joan says, we are looking at them. And, uh, we're gonna use the philosophy that we're not gonna provide services to break even, we're gonna provide services to, to make money, to gain something out of the deal. So yes, that is being looked at for fire, ambulance, rec, library.
Mr. Morell, the last word on this one's yours.
The increase, be it $10, $5, $25, to somebody like my father who's 87 years old, living on a fixed income, means a lot. And there's a lot of people in this community that it affects. As far as the tax and the mill rate, I don't believe that you can talk about a mill rate unless you incorporate the valuation of the community. Talking about one and not including the other is pointless. Both are needed to come, to come to the mill rate cost. In my opinion, as I've stated and from the work that we've done in the past, I believe Caribou's valuation is at least 25% overvalued and it needs to be corrected. The reason a town like Connor is paying cheap, they're an unorganized territory, is pretty simple. It's an unorganized territory. We're not. As far as services, we have to ask ourselves, what is the role of our local government? Is it to be out there bidding on jobs and trying to get ambulance service here and road plowing there and, because nobody, in my opinion, in this city has the knowledge to be out bidding on anything. And case in point, our ambulance went out a year or two ago, come in and sold a bill of goods to the, the, uh, the council that if we added more men, we put more assets on, we're gonna make money. Well, we never did. We haven't to date. So I think we really should look as a community, what is the role of our government? It should be taxpayers, city council, all others. Uh, and it's not. We're upside down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morell. The next set of questions revolve around a public safety infrastructure in the city. So the first, um, submitted questioner asks, what would you do different about the disrepair of our public safety buildings? And the, the tying question with this one from another questioner is, what do you say about spending many millions of dollars for an entirely new public safety complex when our fire station is just over 40 years old and the population is only two-thirds of what it was, uh, four decades ago? So that one goes first to you, Mr. Felix, about, uh, public safety infrastructure.
Well, I, I would again say, you know, services are needed and, you know, when you, when you take a look at what those people have to do in our community today that they didn't have to do 20 years ago, um, and if you don't think they're doing more than what they've done 20 years ago, you need to get a scanner and listen to them. But, uh, our infrastructure for some of our organizations is, is crumbling. Um, our police station is totally in disarray. Uh, I don't believe that, you know, at this moment, we have to build a huge combined organization, but we need to use our resources that we have to come together and figure out a way that we can support those public service organizations, uh, maybe, um, find a place for a, uh, police station somewhere else. Uh, but I think our biggest process would be for infrastructure is to invest in the resources that they use. We have police cars right now with 200,000 miles on them. Okay? When are we gonna react to that? When it's broken down on the side of the road? Uh, you know, our jail, uh, I mean, the police department down there, they don't have nowhere to interview anybody. They're dealing with more things now than you could even, ever even imagine. And yet we're, we're making them, still holding them responsible for the same outcomes, but we're not taking care of them. Okay? Um, I think we should look at possibly finding another location to, to build a police department and then down the road as we go, build that major, uh, facility when the time comes and when we have the finances to support it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Mr. Haney, your thought on public safety infrastructure?
Uh, over a year, year and a half, I was on the committee for the public safety building. We discussed many options. We talked about, we looked at the facilities, we toured the fire station, we toured the police station. I found, and many of us found it, at this point, there's no need to replace our fire station. We did agree that something probably should be done with the police station. We held our meetings at the, at the, uh, Lions Building. I asked the city manager directly, I said, why wouldn't this building that we own work for a police station? I said, it's bigger than what they have now, we own the building, why couldn't we use it? And he agreed with me. He felt that it could be used. After all, a year, year and a half, the cost to build a public safety building came to close to $13 million. It was in hopes that we were gonna get 50% of that money and grant money back. That didn't happen and I believe it was only $50,000 in grant money that they can get. At this time, I don't believe that we should be looking at building a public safety building on the Birdseye site. We have many other things going on for cost, the river road being one, the cleaning of the, of the, of the, uh, Birdseye site, another cost to the public. So I believe that we should be looking at, uh, utilizing buildings that we already have and I think that's the course that we should be taking. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Haney. Mr. Martin, Councilor Martin.
I, I was also on that committee for a year plus and the consensus last May, because we could get... we could get $5 million in grants, was to build a combined. When we found out that we could not get those grants, the committee met again and said, "Okay, the fire department is up." So, at that time, the committee said, "Let's build a police station on Birdseye site that we can add on later with the fire station." And the majority voted for that plan. Since then, the council has been looking at other things. So, no, we're not spending $13 million, and the council can't spend $13 million. If we ever do spend $13 million, it's because the people voted yes. So, I'm not afraid of what the people are gonna vote. So, whatever is brought will have to be voted on by the citizens.
Councillor Martin, Mr. Morell?
I do not agree with building a new fire station. I look at the one we've got every time I drive by. It's a very handsome building, and in my mind's eye, that's a brand-new building. Building a building is not the problem. We can talk funding and who's giving this and who's giving... The real problem is longevity. As a community who has a mass exodus, we have to plan every year to put something away for upkeep. Yes, the first few years, we're all gonna be fat and happy rolling because it's a brand-new building. Those days will come to an end, and it is a hurt and it's a pain that we'll all have to carry. We don't need a new fire station. As far as a police station, I am willing and open-minded enough to discuss another location, a lot depending on what the revenue is, what the cost of the project would be. I have an idea and a plan that I've pushed that would be a fit at the fire station. And then we do have a public safety building right there, exists right now. Thank you.
Mr. Morell, councillor Terrio.
I agree with Felix and Dave, and yes, we do need a new police station desperately. The fire station has a lot of problems right now. There was an inspection done, and there's a lot of repairs that need to be made. And I don't remember what the dollar figure was, but it's a lot of money. So, that is going to have to be addressed at some point in time. And as councillor Martin said, we, I was also on that committee, the advisory board for the safety building. And yes, at the time, we went with option number one, which was the whole building because we were told and were under the assumption that there was gonna be a 50% matching grant. I do need to clarify something that was written by two candidates here tonight in the Republican, that two people whose seats are up for reelection both voted in favor of building a new public safety building at a cost of $10 to $13 million, and they would like to be re-elected to see this happen. That is not, that's not right. We voted for option number one, which was the entire safety building, which at the time, as I said, we thought there was a 50% grant. That was just an option. We have no, we have no authority, no power to spend that kind of money. Only the voters can spend anything over $500,000. That, any project like that will go to the voters. We did not vote for that.
Thank you. That actually is a good lead-in to our next question, because it does have to do directly with your constituents, and it's, these two questions, I'm gonna ask them again because they're somewhat related. The first individual asks, "If elected, how would you feel about loyalty to those who supported you?" And the related question is, "Citizens want to interact with members of the city council? As a member of the city council, how will you interact with citizens who are not currently part of your circle of friends, family, or associates?" And we begin with you on this one, Mr. Haney.
As far as loyalty, I promise that if I'm elected to council, I will do my best to work with everybody. I will try to do my best to be open-minded, do the best I can for the citizens, make things happen for the better, and ask for all the help we can get, you know, by bringing ideas and things like that to the table. So, I will work with people. Question, loyalty, one second.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. Councillor Martin?
Could you clarify which way that loyalty went?
Just wanting to know, how would you feel about loyalty to those who supported you?
Well, I do not take campaign donations. I've been offered some, but I've never taken any. As far as being loyal to who voted for me, I do not know who voted for me because it's a secret ballot. The other part of your question, we're open to work with anybody. We don't represent this side of town or that side of town. We represent the whole town, and that's who we work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morell.
I too would agree that my loyalty lays with what's best for the city of Caribou and its taxpayers. As far as availability, I served on the council in 2006, '07, and '08. People were free to call my phone. People were free to come to my place of business. My door was always open to sit down and have a discussion of what's upsetting you. I'm not guaranteeing I can fix it. I am guaranteeing you'll have my ear to talk to me.
Thank you. Councillor Terrio?
Yes, I, I am loyal to the city of Caribou and the people in the city of Caribou. I have no affiliation with anybody, no agenda. My objective is to do the best I can for the city as a whole. And I've always, I enjoy talking to people. I'm at the restaurants a lot. I see a lot of people, and they're, they sit down, they talk, you know, they say, "Well, can I ask you about this or about that?" And even like I mentioned Thursdays on Sweden, that chair was a revolving chair for three or four years. They would come and sit and talk and, and anybody that wants to any time can ask questions, can talk about it. And I don't, I, I respect other people's opinions. If they don't agree with me, that's fine. I don't care. I, this is my opinion, this is your opinion, that's great. I don't dislike them for it. I don't, you know, hold any grudges or anything. Everybody's entitled to their own, so I'm open to whatever.
Mr. Felix, constituent relations?
I would say on the loyalty side, that was one of the biggest values that I, I took an oath to uphold many, many years ago, and I still do. My oath and creed will never change. As a, as a senior non-commissioned officer in the Army, I will never, ever use my rank, position, title, or anything like that to obtain pleasure, profit, or personal safety. My, my work would be to take care of people. And if the people need something, then that's what I'm there for. You know, I think we, I think I can be a voice for them, and, you know, I belong to many, many organizations, and the same thing, I don't, I don't ever, I've used my talents as a listener more than just telling them my opinion. I'd rather hear from them, because a lot of times I get the best ideas from the people that I talk with. And, because that's the best way to network and find out new and outstanding ways to overcome problems. We may never agree, but, you know, that's life. You know, take it as it comes. Thank you.
Thank you. We've made it through all of the submitted questions, so the final part of our evening together will be to get two-minute closing remarks from each of our candidates, and we're going to begin with one of our two incumbents on that, councillor Martin.
Yes, I believe in giving the people what they want. For instance, I proposed two years ago that we should have a senior tax program to, to cut the taxes of the oldest and most needy residents of the community. And to check the feeling of the community on that, I asked to have a question put on a referendum, I mean, on the, on the ballot, non-binding, and about 57% of the people said, "Yeah, I'd pay a little more to provide relief." And we had stated right on the question, this could cost up to half a mill. Well, through the budget process, it was reduced to $50,000, 2/7 of a mill. So, the people support a program that the council would not approve, that would've cost 14 cents per thousand, and we could've helped 200 families get $500, just $400. So, I'm hoping to try to get that program going again. Thank you.
Councillor Martin, Mr. Morell, your last words.
I just want to thank everybody for listening to me go on. Some of you have heard me say this for 20 years, and I just want to thank you for listening and bucking up and not cringing every time I mention fiscal foundation. I would like to add to Mrs. Terrio's comment about the secession committee. I was one of five on that committee, very, very proud of what we did. Five of us donated over 7,000 man-hours of our own time away from our own families to bring some change to this town. And this is after coming to countless meetings, as some have said, "Come here and tell the council what you want." I'm for one that's been there, and it hasn't changed the needle a bit. We decided that the only option was to go down that road. Nobody said we wanted to go full secession. We brought eight complaints with eight possible solutions to a meeting that fell on deaf, blind, however you want to call it, ears. Nothing was ever done. It was argued about. We felt we had no choice. After 7,000 man-hours, nobody wanted to talk issues, so we rolled the dice. Not that we wanted to, we felt we had no choice. So, for all the other four that were involved, one, God rest his soul, isn't here, I want to thank them for including me in the opportunity of going and doing the secession committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morell. Councillor Terrio, your last words.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming out and for your questions. I just wanted to add one thing to one of the questions, because we were only allowed one, one word, about the attendance. I've been on the council for seven years, and I have not missed a meeting. I've only missed one workshop, and I think I've attended every committee meeting. So, I am dedicated to making sure that I'm there, and I'm nosy, so, you know, that's part of it, too. I don't want to miss a beat. But I love serving on council, love the work, the challenges, the rewards, and I would like to keep doing it until I'm, well, I'm getting old, so, a few more years anyway.
Thank you, councillor Terrio. Mr. Felix, your last words.
Again, thank everyone for coming and listening and watching and giving me this unique opportunity to step up, and I never, ever thought I'd ever want to do that. I've always tried to be behind-the-scenes kind of person. I'm a solution-based person. I've gone into organizations where the same, the same philosophy's coming, "We can't do this, we can't do that." And before you know it, the organization became the largest in the state of Maine. You know, we gotta listen to each other. We gotta look at what separates us from all the other communities, focus on that. We have a huge veteran community here in Caribou, huge. Why don't we expand some of the opportunities that, for exemptions on their property taxes and go from 100% disabled to giving them an exemption of, it's $6,000 right now, if they're 62, blind, deaf, and 100%. Why don't you say, "Hey, you know, every veteran, we're gonna give you a decrease in, for the exemption, increase it for your value of your home so you can save some money." Get more veterans to move into the community. Every one of those veterans are taxpayers. Every one of them will buy homes. Everyone will raise their family. They all come from the same values, okay? And then maybe we can change our sign on the outside that says, "Welcome to Caribou, the most veteran-friendly place in America." Okay? And that's about growth. You know, we have the resources. Let's use the resources and help each other, okay? The rest will come with ease. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Mr. Haney, the last word is yours.
Thank you, Jason Christie, for holding this candidate forum. For many years, I've been actively involved in many different activities and groups, trying to make Caribou a place where people can afford to live and grow. As I stated earlier, we are losing more people every year. 10 years ago, we had a population of about 8,200 people. Today, it is around 7,400. The problem, in my opinion, is our government. And this city should be going down in cost with the declining of population, but instead it keeps going up every year. In order for any hope of getting this community a place for people to want to stay here and grow, we need to downsize the cost of our government and still keep the services we have. I believe we can. So, if elected to council and working with the other councillors and the departments, we must make change if people want to live and grow here. On November 5th, I'm asking for your trust and support to vote for me for change that needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haney. So, lastly, I would just say to my fellow Caribou residents that the choice is yours. The voice, your opportunity to have your voice heard, happens on November 5th at the polls, and I do encourage all fellow Caribou residents to get out and vote on November 5th. And as a reminder, if you are in need of an absentee ballot, please see the city clerk's office prior to 7:00 PM on Thursday, October 31st. And of course, if you are not a registered voter and are eligible to be a registered voter, please do contact the city clerk's office again prior to that October 31st deadline as well. On behalf of the city of Caribou and our five candidates, thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you for watching, those of you who are watching online, and I wish you all a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.